Evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. The time is six o'clock. I call this meeting of the Godly Independent School District to order. Let the record show we have a quorum of board members present. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if I could ask Mr. Frazier if you could help us with invocation, sir?
Let's pray. Our most holy and gracious Father, I come to you this evening thanking you for this Board of Trustees. I'm thanking you for the staff of Godly ISD, for the students, for the parents, for the community here. Lord, we're grateful for the work, the dedication that everyone puts into to make this town and this school the best that it can be. And Lord, as we go through this meeting, I ask that each and every decision be made in accordance with your will. And God, most of all, we are just so grateful for your loving sacrifice of your Son, Jesus Christ, and we love you so much. And it's in Christ's holy and precious name that I pray. Amen.
Thank you. And Ms. Rhodes, can you help us with the pledges?
Will you please stand for the pledges? We will start with the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you.
At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on district employees by name or position or students are not allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm professional Upon the expiration of the three minutes, I will call the next person up to speak. Do we have our timer? Thank you. All right. First, Ms. Nova Olsen, and she is signed up to speak on Agenda Item 5B.
Check. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I do not support any further indebtedness by this ISD that my taxes pay for. This community is overtaxed as it is. My income has not kept up with inflation. That means I have to be wise with my money in this economy, and that means sometimes I have to say no to things I may want. Maybe others in this community are comfortable filing bankruptcy and leaving their neighbors holding their debt. A certain sign of poor leadership is settling one's own neighbors with debt. They, nor their children, nor grandchildren can pay. Godly ISD's debt per student is nearly $84,000. That's per student. That's obscene. Compare like districts, and the next closest district's debt per student is nearly $30,000 less per student. Our indebtedness is staggering, especially compared to like districts, and you can see that on the handouts. Honestly, I don't know how you can even think of approving this for your own neighbors when doing so will most certainly put some at great risk for homelessness. The unfortunate truth here is the district banked on their ship coming in, told the community growth pays for growth, which is a lie, and used previous bond money that should have paid for needed repairs and more space. Instead, it bought the proverbial Ferrari. Now the district wants to fear monger the community, cough up more money because the Ferrari isn't big enough for the whole family. Taking on more debt due to mismanagement of previous bonds is foolish. For this community to approve of bad spending habits is enabling poor choices. It's time to grow up, learn from these mistakes, and think outside the box like other fiscally responsible districts are doing. Doing so will demonstrate sound, responsible leadership. Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Rhonda Miller, and again, Agenda Item 5B.
Godly ISD is in debt over $225 million, just in principle alone. Add the $173 million of interest, and it's obvious Godly is way over its head. It doesn't matter how many times you manipulate the calendar year to cover poor money management or the fact that you hide behind a loophole in statute to prevent total transparency. You're not only morally but also financially bankrupt. The current debt per student is $84,000, as Nova just said. Saddling them with even more debt is shameful and certainly not loving them. How is that the Texas way? Unfortunately, this district, through financial mismanagement, is now forced to continuously rob Peter to pay Paul. We all know that it is a vicious cycle that ends poorly, but in this case, it's not leadership that pays the consequences, it's the taxpayers. How is that the Godly way? I do not and cannot support Godly ISD taking on more debt. Growth can't support it, as the district not only manipulates finances but also its growth. Taxpayers certainly cannot afford this. Many of us cannot afford to run around in expensive luxurious boats. No, the rest of us are forced to live without our means while Godly ISD steals our money and spends it recklessly. Therefore, I will not support any stealing anymore of mine or others' hard-earned money. Additionally, it's important to note that under the United Nations Vancouver Declaration, local governments are mandated to tax landowners, including unrealized gains, to redistribute that wealth throughout the community for social justice. This is not the American way or the Texas way, so I'm here to tell you publicly, as a freedom-loving American Texan, I do not consent to you or the United Nations for stealing my property.
Thank you. Next, we will move into business items. First on the agenda is consider additional FTEs for the 2526 school year.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much. We do have three additional FTEs that I am requesting from you this evening. We have a request for an ESL Para at Legacy and a Special Education Para at Pleasantview and an additional FTE that will be held for growth. We did have one of those that you approved in April. We had our third grade completely full. Every seat in third grade was filled by the first Friday, so we were able to use that FTE to quickly add a teacher and to minimize disruption to students having to shuffle to a new class. So since we did use that, we were asking to have this FTE in case the same situation occurs. We do have several grade levels that are on the brink of being full again with the FTEs that we have. So I recommend the approval of the three FTEs as presented.
What are some of those grade levels that are reaching capacity, Dr. Block?
So we have second grade. That's another grade. That's kind of full. We will be overflowing to some of the grade levels. We have pockets of places that do have seats available. I know second, first, and second, I think, are the main two that we're concerned with at this time.
I'll consider a motion.
I make a motion to approve the FTEs as presented and recommended by Dr. Block.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we will consider and take action on an order calling a bond election in the district on November 4, 2025. So before we get into any discussion on this, I do want to set the stage a little bit in that I really would like this to be discussed in more of a workshop format to allow for robust dialogue. I think it's important that we be able to have a robust discussion. I do ask that you be respectful of each other. Let's not run over each other as we're trying to have a good, healthy dialogue. And then, at some point, will be opportunity for a motion. So, Dr. Dear.
If our committee members here will come on up. Our Long Range Facilities Planning Committee had their final meeting last night, and they have a recommendation for us. And I will, as they're coming up here, we will let them go ahead and introduce themselves to you, and they have a presentation for us. Mr. Frazier, take it away.
Good evening, Board. I am Tom Frazier. I am a parent of a student and a parent of a future student of Godly ISD. Attended both RB Godly and Legacy Elementary, and I am also the principal at Legacy Elementary.
Hello. My name is Kay Penny. I'm a grandparent of a student attending school in Godly. I'm also a volunteer at the campuses. I've been a member of the FACE Committee since January 2023, and I'm a substitute teacher in Godly and in Joshua.
Hi, I'm Amy Neal. I am a parent of five kiddos here in Godly, one future student to come. Oh, yes, four campuses, spread out across four campuses.
And I'm Angie Pinkerton, eighth-grade science teacher, and also a parent of a high schooler and a middle schooler.
All right. So tonight, we're going to discuss a variety of different things. Before we get going, though, I do want to talk about how our committee met. We had three different meetings. They were all open to the public. They were recorded. There was a good representation of the community. We had parents, staff, grandparents, business leaders, community, and even some board members on the committee, and worked very hard and came to an overall general consensus that we would like to present to you tonight. So what we'll do is we'll just kind of give you a brief overview of the process, how the committee went about its business. We'll talk about how we prioritize different projects, talked about our needs versus our wants, what can we want right now, what do we need right now, and what can be put off into the future, and talk about our fiscal recommendation and then the scope of the
Some more details about this process. We discussed the current conditions of the district. We included enrollment projections. We had experts come in and do projections based on the housing growth. We looked at our facilities, needs, the conditions of the buildings, and we talked about the district bond capacity, as well as how the tax rate is split between the maintenance and operation and the interest and sinking portion, and how that has progressed through time. We reviewed the demographics report and learned about how fast our district is going. We talked to the administrators of these various campuses to see any problems or needs they had identified. We talked about school finance. We had the district financial advisor come and talk to us about specifically the bond capacity and how that's determined. And based on all this information, we focused on the future of Godly ISD. We talked about how the learning process has changed since some of us were in school. Things are different. We talked about technology and how we needed to keep up with that. We prioritized the projects to address our current needs, and our ultimate goal was to come up with a recommendation to present to the board.
As you can see on this slide, we're expecting 1,000 new students in the next five years. That is based on a demographic report that was done for Godly ISD. We have four out of our six campuses in the next five years are going to be over capacity. And I just have an example because at the middle school where I'm at, we started the school year seven days ago at 492 students. Tomorrow, we will be at 517 students. We have a capacity of 550. We're probably going to hit that this year. That's a problem. And then we also want to address the growth and expand capacity at student programs, so we would like to add and renovate and repurpose space on multiple campuses. And we'd like to expand options for campuses besides just the high school. Our elementaries and our middle school need to have that extra stuff as well.
All right. So these are some of the projects that we came up with that were priorities. We spent time as individuals and in small groups and ranking and prioritizing potential projects based on needs that we obviously listened to from the teachers, the people that came and had information for us firsthand. So what we came up with was RB Godly and Legacy were priority number one. Those need to be addressed. The buses, the Godly Middle School addition, transportation, the classroom tech, Godly Middle School renovation, and the traffic. Number eight and nine, the Performing Arts Center and Career Tech updates, we did away with. We decided that those were not top priorities.
Once we narrowed down and prioritized our list, one of the things we looked at, as I said earlier, was the condition of the facilities, in particular, the aging of some of our air conditioning units, the impact of the roof, our poor roofing in some of our buildings. We talked about the overcrowding in campuses. We had feedback from a teacher who was a member, as one of our presenters, as far as the current conditions that the campus is in. There are things that could be done, that need to be done, to improve the face of that campus. We considered feedback from the committee. We focused on student enrollment and the need to expand a capacity. We talked about the use of the sixth-grade campus and moving and merging that with the middle school campus and making, increasing capacity for that school. As she said, the middle school is 550, and we built on this addition. We can add more capacity there, and the sixth grade could move over and have more capacity in the current middle school footprint. We did talk about the importance in doing a combination of combining the seventh with the middle school grades, is we want to keep a level of separation, that we have the sixth grade, you know, in a place for themselves. While there will have to be shared cafeteria, gym, things like that, we want to make sure that the sixth grade remains a standalone unit. And we talked about that would allow us to have new students on multiple campuses.
Okay. So we had three different scenarios to choose from. We did this as individuals and in groups again. The committee considered three, sorry, I already said that, three different scenarios. One included prioritized wants and needs. One included addressing aging facilities, growth, and infrastructure, and one addressed some aging facilities and growth needs. You've already heard, there's a lot of problems with roofs and water damage and so forth. Anyways, we, there were an overwhelming vote for number two. At the end, we were all asked if the people that voted for, the two people that voted for scenario one and the three people who voted for scenario three, if they would agree to scenario two, so that we were unanimous and everyone voted yes.
Sometimes I click it, it moves a couple, sometimes it doesn't move any. So there are two different ways, really, to look at the recommendations. One of them is, back a slide. There it is. Is, one of them is looking at them per campus. So we can talk about RB Godly and Legacy Elementary, expanding cafeterias there. I know at Legacy Elementary, last year, we did not have the opportunity to have our own kindergarten graduation on our own campus. This year, we're likely not going to be able to have our grade-level musicals and things like that on our own campus because parents just flat out don't fit in the cafeteria. Students don't fit in the cafeteria. Our morning meeting where we have everybody together has been split. Half the school is in a gym and half the school is in the cafeteria. So expanding that cafeteria there, and I know RB Godly is in a similar boat there. But definitely, the data wiring, the technology infrastructure, the stuff that you don't see that really makes everything go, and then the classroom technology increases in equity across the district for both the sixth grade and the middle school, as well as the two elementary schools. And then, what was mentioned before, the addition to the middle school, as well as repurposing the current middle school and using that footprint as the sixth-grade campus and having the seventh and eighth-grade campus addition there. And then, of course, the traffic studies, which we all know that traffic is a thing, and additional buses. Any questions before I move on to this slide? This is really one way to look at the proposal and to think about the proposal. Okay? So another way to view it?
I'm sorry. The expansion of the cafeterias, do they, do we currently have enough room for students to eat lunch in the cafeteria? Or are we having to kind of juggle lunch periods as well? You mentioned the morning, early morning meetings and special events, but what about our day-to-day use of the cafeteria? Like, is the cafeteria, like the kitchen, large enough? Are we just talking about expansion? Are we going to have to do some expansion of like the actual cooking area of them as well, or just, there's a lot of questions?
Great questions.
Okay, sorry. You know where I'm going.
Let me try to tackle those with one answer. Yes, the day-to-day operations, right now, we are at capacity. The kitchen is functioning and it is doing a great job, and I don't believe additions to the kitchen would be necessary, just additions to the capacity to get the space to allow the students in. So day-to-day functioning, we are at our limit. Is RB the same way? RB is the same way. There it goes. So the other way to look at it is to look at the purposes of each project. So preparing for student growth. We all know that we are growing. We continue to be a fast-paced growth school district. And then, of course, addressing the aging and the outdated utilities, the structures, and the technology infrastructure to the campuses, and again, that traffic study and the infrastructure to the physical locations.
Specifically, the elevator at Legacy. I'm familiar with the campus. I had kids on that campus. We have almost an equal number of classrooms on the first and second floor there. Is the elevator not working at all? So are we not allowing children who would need an elevator to get to the second floor where their classrooms are? What are we doing if it's not working?
It is functioning. It is just in need of major repair and upgrades, possibly to the point of maybe not being able to repair it, to simply have to replace it. But it does function and serve its purpose right now.
Hey, I got a question. I should know the answers. Probably Rich, you could answer it. What's the average lifespan of a school bus?
Spencer, do we know that? I know we've got, I think, six that have been identified that are in desperate need to be replaced, and we've got nine that don't have seatbelts.
We have some that are 15, 20 years old, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
It was also brought up in our Facilities Planning Committee with the buses, that as we grow, we are adding programming, extracurriculars. So there are some times where extracurriculars are having to wait for the route buses to get back before they can leave. And I don't know if you've noticed a lot of big- And I don't know if you've noticed, a lot of bigger school districts do that, so teams don't show up until tip-off or kickoff, and bands don't show up until halftime because they're in that, that same boat, and we would really not want to be in there.
Speaking to the traffic study, I know that we've heard from the district that Tech Dot has done some traffic studies on 2331 and 171. So why would we need to be funding a traffic study to address, I mean, we obviously know that traffic's bad, anybody who's driven through Godley in the last seven days. But, I mean, so why do we need to be funding a traffic study? And what, what purpose is that filling?
So we know they did a traffic study on 171 because they're starting construction on it. I don't know how old that traffic study is. I talked to Tech Dot this week and have asked for that traffic study. To my knowledge, they haven't done, I don't know if they've done one on 2331 because they don't have any plan for 2331 right now. But the traffic study would also include like this, that, that intersection right there between the high school and middle school that's just kind of wonky. It would be traffic study, it would include movement on our campuses, which the Tech Dot studies wouldn't give us. Now, if, if it turns out that they do have, they do have traffic studies, then we wouldn't have to do it. It's, I guess it's, if they don't.
Since that's actually within the city limits, is that something that we work with the city on and, and share that cost? Why would the district be fronting that whole cost by ourselves?
So spoke with Ms. Winkle, because they're Tech Dot roads, both of those are, so those aren't. I know, I'm trying to get traffic studies from them because we would rather not spend that money if we didn't have to. But the, a traffic study, and don't hold me to this number for probably both here and at the Legacy and RB sixth grade campus, might be around $50,000. So the vast majority of that is, well, buses and.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure for it. So if we need a right-hand turn lane that's on our property, or we need to do, you know, whatever we need to do with this intersection, it's what we need to do here to help with traffic.
I had a question regarding the growth for the sixth grade campus, and it includes classrooms, cafeteria, athletic, and fine arts. But in sixth grade, they don't necessarily participate in athletics or fine arts, so would that be something?
They do actually participate in fine arts, and then they're, they have pre-athletics, what they're working with, and I don't want to speak out of turn for Ms. Duckett. But, so yes, they do have bands, they do have arts, and I believe an ideal thing in the future would be to have theater.
Okay. So what extracurricular does sixth grade participate in?
We don't do anything that's school sanctioned other than band, but we do have pre-athletics, meaning that they do a lot of more rigorous workouts than elementary PE would. But we don't have anything, and they do some FFA outside of school, but nothing that's like, we do have art, yes, art as well.
Okay.
Yeah. We do need more electives.
I mean, we, with the added capacity of additional classrooms for sixth grade, I feel like the cafeteria expansion would be a given, but I just wasn't, as far as needing additional athletic or fine arts.
Middle school or the sixth grade campus?
Middle school.
Oh, yes.
I mean, we're talking about sixth through eighth grade.
Right, right. We don't have access to everything that they do. It would be nice for them to have more opportunities and to be able to share the, the load of student numbers. As we're getting bigger, we're running out of options, so.
Right, thank you.
So, and just to be clear, this would be a renovation to the current middle school, seventh and eighth grade campus, to allow the sixth graders to move into that footprint.
So at RB and Legacy, we're not adding classrooms, we're just expanding the cafeteria?
As of right now, yes, that is the scope and the equitable technology throughout each classroom as well.
Because I know that, I believe, we're reaching capacity, so wouldn't it be wiser cost per square foot to add classrooms versus expanding cafeteria space?
Oh, yes. So at Legacy, we did add five classroom spaces. Goodness, that sign is really getting me now. Did add the five classroom spaces with the administration moving out, so that really helped our capacity. Like Dr. Block mentioned, we did have a third grade teacher. We were able to house that third grade teacher, an additional kindergarten teacher already, and an additional fourth grade teacher with that extra space. So space is, classroom space right now is less of an issue than the cafeteria is.
And then another question, this is probably for administration, but Grandview and Keene are adding capacity while saving taxpayer money by converting open spaces to traditional classrooms. Is this something that Godley has considered?
Yes.
Are there other questions?
Do you want to give a big thank you to our committee members that came and presented? We really appreciate it. And also to the teachers that showed up. Really appreciate the teachers that showed up because that shows that this, just how much of a need that this, this is. So thank you, teachers, for showing up.
If you served on the committee, could you stand for a moment? Thank you.
So I also want to echo a thank you to the committee members for presenting, providing questions and answers to our questions. So at this point, just want to remind the board that the committee does make a recommendation, but ultimately, it's up to us as a board to decide, number one, if the timing's right to call an election. Secondly, we got to decide as the amount correct. And then, thirdly, if we choose to move forward with a bond, what is the preferred, I'm going to call it best, the better way to present this to the voters? So keeping that in mind, guess I would like to start dialogue. Just what's your thoughts, first of all, on the timing for the bond? And I'd like to facilitate like we did previously, so I'm going to start on my right. Kayla, if you would care to express any perspectives on the, the timing of a bond?
On the timing specifically, so I know in our budget meetings, we did discuss that our INS budget is already at a deficit, which means that the taxes we bring in are not enough to cover our bond payments. So I fear the timing is not fiscally responsible at this time to call a bond when we struggle to pay our current bond debt. The budget ending June 30th, there was a $347,000 deficit. I know that moving to a June year-end and shaving two months off of our budget makes us appear to have a surplus, when in actuality, there is a deficit. It was asked by Terry in our budget workshop on June 16th, what happens when our second bond payment of the year in August is outside of the current budget scope? Spencer said it will be accrued later in the year, and that going from 12-month to 10-month budget made us appear to go from a $1.7 million deficit to a $1.8 million surplus. That will not be the case next year when we go to the full 12-month budget. How can we take on more debt when we struggle to pay our current debt? Currently, Godley ISD has $225.5 million in outstanding debt principal, equalling $83,570 per student. Yes, I understand that several campuses are in dire need of repairs. Why in the 2021 bond were these cut due to COVID escalation, but no cuts were made to the Wild Stadium or Pleasant View? There seems to be a lack of priority in budgeting for these repairs, and so that's my concern with timing.
Spencer, could you give us some clarity on the INS deficit, please?
And while you're there, can you answer any questions about us being able to pay our bond payments? To just speak to what Ms. Lane said.
Absolutely. Good evening, board. So first of all, as it relates to the INS, we've had multiple discussions about this at prior board meetings. The question was asked multiple times, and the answer is going to be the exact same. That is calculated in when we sold the bonds originally, we were utilizing the funds that we were going to receive to help pay it off quicker. And so by us utilizing our fund balance, instead of it just sitting in the bank of Godley, we're actually utilizing it for the taxpayers and paying bond debt off early. So in relation to a couple of other questions, the, yes, it was, we did go from the 12 months to the 10 months, but by no meaning was this manipulated, and I think was called extortionism by yourself. Absolutely, that's not been the case. It's actually a use of our financial capacity to be in a healthier subject as a district. And so over the past two years, we've actually increased our financial capacity. We hold three different Texas Transparency Stars, two of which are related to debt service and traditional finances. So stating that we are bankrupt is factually incorrect. In addition, the COVID pricing, so there's this item in bonds called escalation, and escalation is around eight to 10% each year. And so when projects are delayed, like they were during COVID, COVID pricing went up 20%, and then escalation was going up eight to 10% there. So unfortunately, yes, there were projects that needed to be cut, that were at the back end of the progress. And so we'd already started and we're almost all the way done with the completion of those items for the arena, for the Wild, and for Pleasant View. And so the items that were at the end, those were the ones that were, that were left off. In addition, wanted to talk about the, it was brought up about our debt per student and in comparison with some other districts. Yes, that is true. So the Texas Bond Review Board has some good information out there, and I think that's where individuals in the community have gone out and, and looked at this information. But that doesn't necessarily give the whole picture. Of the nine districts that we're compared with, four of them are declining districts, so they're actually losing. And then the other five haven't grown more than 10%. Godley ISD has grown over 36% in the past six years and kind of looking at the same calculation. And so when you look at just a specific piece of data, it doesn't necessarily tell the whole picture. But if you do look at districts that are like us, as an example, Gerald ISD, Salina ISD, Community, Northwest, Crowley, Prosper, Hutto, Argyle, and Georgetown, all share the same thing that we are, a fast-growth district. Those other nine, none of them are fast-growth districts. And I think, I think that was all of them for right now.
Thank you.
Have we missed any payments to our, our bonds?
No, no payments have been missed. They never will be missed, so.
And if I was a member of the community and I wanted to go and look at that myself, where would I be able to see that we are not missing bond payments and that, that we are paying them on time and actually, from what you said, above what we owe?
Yeah, so all of our information, it has to be published through Debt Transparency, so that has to be posted either to the Comptroller's website or to our website. Since we have that Debt Obligation Transparency Star, you can go to our website and all of that information is there.
So I want to give others opportunity, so Jeff.
I'm sorry, can I just respond to something that he said? I never used the words bankrupt or extortionism, so I'm not sure where you got that. But my concern is, is it best use of our fund balance, which is essentially a savings account, to pay bond debt when the INS budget and those taxes are supposed to be utilized for making those payments? And then also, moving from a 12-month to a 10-month budget, that's not going to help us next year. We still have a 12-month cycle. We're just looking at 10 months versus 12 months.
Yeah, you're, you're correct on the aspect that we're utilizing the fund balance. So the thing about INS fund balance is that you have to use it to pay INS debt. So there's two different buckets. We've talked about this. The INS bucket has to be used to pay off bond debt. The MNO has to be used for all other things. So by default, we are utilizing the funds from the community. As it relates to the, the other question, and it went off the top of my head, what was the second piece that you had?
The moving from 12-month to 10-month budget.
Yes, yeah, so moving to the 10-month to 12-month, we've actually approved, well, actually, I think you did not vote to approve the budget for this '25-'26 school year, but in that '25-'26 school year, it was a level budget for MNO.
I'd like to move along. Jeff, you have some perspective on the timing of a recommended bond?
So I may look at this a little different. I try to, I try to apply common sense. I just try to look at it, and, and when you look on paper, obviously, we've got, you know, we've, we've taken on some debt and, and, you know, it's thrown out a lot. The debt per student is obviously high. So I start thinking, well, how do we get here? How do we get to this point? And when you look in comparison to every other district, no other district in the state of Texas with the amount of facilities that Godley ISD had took on nearly 40% growth after the largest surge of inflation the country's ever seen. Like, that's a stat. That's not an opinion. So I guess you can think, well, how could, how could we have changed that? Well, I guess we could have approached the voters back in 2016, 2018, and asked for facilities we didn't need. That doesn't seem responsible. So it's unfortunate, you know, that we experienced the largest surge of growth in comparison to other districts with the amount of facilities that we had at a very, you know, just the poor timing. So timing was the topic of your question, so that's, you know, that, that ties into that. You know, in listening to some of the, you know, even some of the speakers, you know, when we, when we talk about, one of the speakers mentioned to say no to a want. I don't, I didn't, I didn't see any wants presented. So it seems easy to, that we don't have any wants to say no to. So I'm glad that was said.
Okay, Terry?
I am looking at this from, I'm in the mortgage business, and we have the capacity for $120 million. What does that mean? That means that that's what we can afford. It's any person that's going to go out and buy a home, usually doesn't have cash to pay for that home, they get a mortgage. Essentially, that's what a bond is, asking our constituents for us to borrow money to build or to maintain our facilities. And so if someone came to me wanting to buy an $800,000 home, and they could only afford a $250,000 home, they're not going to get a mortgage for the 800. The bond capacity allows us to borrow up to $120 million. We have the capacity to pay for that. It would be against the law to go out and sell bonds that we didn't have the capacity to pay back. So I think it's important that we are able to maintain the facilities. We pride it ourself on maintaining beautiful campuses and facilities, and our kids need a safe place to be, and I think it's important for us to call the bond.
Krista?
When you speak about timing, I think about, is it the right time to, to put it on the ballot, to give our voters a chance to speak? And I think it's always the right time to give our voters a chance, and our community a chance, to share what they feel about. I know not, but just a few months ago, I really wish that the, the, our representatives at the, the state level would have given all of the people in the state of Texas a chance to vote on some, some things, and they didn't. And so I think it's our responsibility as leaders to bring this and put it on the ballot and let the community and the voters decide if it's something they want.
Thank you. Jamie?
I agree with Krista, and if now's not right, the time, the right time, when is the right time? The further you push it out, the more money you're going to be asking for, not just in what is needed for repairs, but the big E-word, escalation.
Simone?
There we go. I would really agree with the majority of what's been set up here, that it's, we need to give the option for the community to vote. And I know. it's, we need to give the option for the community to vote. And I know Jamie and myself sat on the Long Range Planning Committee and listening to Ms. Pinkerton talk about the mold that's growing in the classroom that she's in every single day. And my student is now a seventh grader, and I'm thinking, those long-term things, we can't, we can't sit back and wait on. We need to handle that. And like Jeff said, these aren't really wants, they're needs. So we need to handle our needs.
Thanks everyone for that. So I guess the, the second question that I would ask, again, lots of discussion about the timing, and Teri touched on, is the amount. How do we, what amount do we present to the voters? Obviously, there's a recommendation. So again, like to give opportunity. And Kayla, if you have additional, I realize you've expressed an opinion about it, but I'd want to give you the opportunity to speak on an amount if you care to.
I have no comments on an amount.
Fair enough. Thank you. Jeff, any comments on an amount?
No, I think the, the committee did a good job, you know, trying to prioritize those, those, those needs. And, you know, it sounds like a lot of it's, you know, renovations and additions to our existing facilities. There's not any new shiny, you know, pennies that being presented.
Teri?
And I, I think the, and I thank the bond committee too for their diligence in going through the list and kind of assimilating the priorities there. I think it is important, and I don't even know that I'd call what we're wanting is, is renovations, more is, is facilities and maintenance and upgrades. I mean, if the AC is going to break and there are some that are not working, the roof is leaking, I mean, that, that, that's a health issue for our children and our schools. So we need to get those fixed.
Krista?
I think the committee has done a great job, and I think they kind of did a lot of the hard work for us. And if our capacity is 120 million, I think they've done a great job trying to utilize the capacity that we have to, you know, our, our biggest benefits and addressing our, our needs. I, you know, I wish we had a chance to address some of our growth issues other than, you know, the biggest need of the, the capacity at the middle school. But I think that we, we really need to tackle some of these really big maintenance concerns that we, we cannot do out of a normal budget.
Jamie?
I agree. We did focus a lot on the money, and I think everyone that was on that committee would choose the higher amount. But we went and pared down to what is really needed and came to the agreement, obviously, that this is what we believe the, the community would support.
I'd like to use the word bare bones. It's really bare bones.
Simone?
Again, I'll second what Jamie said as far as we really worked hard to focus on the bare bones needs. And I mean, I'm in the construction industry and I can tell you, like, nothing's cheap. I sell canopies and they're $15,000, like, and that's one single thing. So renovations, HVAC, roofs, like, it's not a cheap endeavor. So, but the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be.
Okay. Thank you. So the other question that I posed a minute ago is that if we choose to go forward, how do we want to package this for the community? And specifically, I'm thinking of some of the discussions that we've had in the past around a single proposition or multiple propositions. So again, would like to have some dialogue on, in that area. Before we get too deep into that, Dr. Dear, do you have some, some discussion of pros and cons of the different? Okay. So Kayla, any, any thoughts on a single prop or multi-prop?
From what I've heard from the community, they seem to prefer multi-propositions to have multiple options. That's just what I've seen being talked about.
Jeff?
I would have to concur.
I'm on the opinion that I agree also with the multiple prop. I would like to hear if any of the bond committee or Long Range Planning Committee people have an opinion. I'd like to hear what you guys think about one proposition versus multiple, if y'all have any thoughts on that.
If I can ask, let's, let's finish going through and allowing the board members, and then we'll certainly give any of the committee members an opportunity to provide their input. Krista?
I was of the same thought. I wanted to kind of know if the committee had discussed that and what the general consensus was from the committee. Looking at what they've already presented, would we vote tonight, I have a question, would we vote tonight and say, yes, we wanted multiple props? Or do we decide tonight what's going to be in multiple props if we do that? Is that?
We would need to decide tonight on whether it is one or multiple props and what would be in the props.
And what we pull out and do where. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Personally, I prefer a single, simply because I think it could be confusing to the voters who may not understand that they can vote for one or multiple items on the ballot. And also, if something, if you, depending on how it was broken down, you could possibly run the risk of not having money for future use based on escalation, et cetera. So I would prefer a single.
So I am of the opinion that the community wants multiple as well, to kind of piggyback off of Jamie and after further investigation on multiple versus one, I, I support either way. I think we need to put something forward, whether it's multiple or one, whatever the majority is comfortable with, I want to support. But I will say, I think if we do multiple propositions, I think that what Jamie said, there is potential for some that are not as familiar with the process to maybe not vote for all of them, even if they support all of them. And it also, I think pigeonholes the money and how it can be allocated. So, you know, if we break it up in certain sections and one of the propositions maybe comes in under budget, but another one needs a little bit more over here, I think that, not I think, I know, that you can't move that. Like, it has to follow where it's gone. And so having it in one, I think allows kind of grace for escalation on specific projects or, you know, the need to maybe have flexibility in those things. So for that reason, I personally think one might be the better option. But again.
Those are good points. Those are good points.
Thanks for clarifying, making it more known what I meant, Simone.
I wanted to give a little bit of clarity.
Yes, thank you.
Because I really dug in.
But I, I will concur with Simone. I will support what the majority goes with.
Okay. So we had several of the committee members here. So Mr. Frazier, since you started the presentation, I'm going to call you out, sir. So do you have a, a perspective on one or multiple props?
This is like an auction. I bent down to scratch my ankle and got called on. So as far as the committee goes, we did not really discuss one or multiple propositions. It was held in, you know, some side conversations, things like that. But as far as the committee, we did not bring a recommendation for that. We left that duty and chore up to the board. So that's my opinion.
All right. I'm going to ask you point blank. Yeah, I know. You, you live here, you work here, you have a large family here.
Multiple props.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Who else? Amy? Do you have an opinion? They just relaxed, and now we call them back up.
Can you hear me? Okay. So I wanted the multiple in the beginning, but as I learned more and how the funds kind of are able to move, I think one is the smartest way to go. Even if the community has said, some of the community has said multiple props, I think, I just think one's the best way to go.
If there's any committee member who would like to speak to this question at hand, please feel free to come forward and share your opinion about multi versus single propositions. I know, I, I know that seems that it could open up a big can of worms, but I think that we should give the committee a chance to, to offer their opinions. I don't want to hear just from two people, if more people want to share their opinion.
Can I, can I clarify something real quick? Just when, when we're talking about one, one prop and the money, when we use terms like move around or flexibility, you know, I just want to clarify that, that it, if there, if there were additional, if the budget came in smaller on one project and one came in larger on, on another, we could move it from, from that one to the other. But we can't, we don't have flexibility or freedoms to just, you know, add things in that the voters never voted for. We couldn't, you know, use it for locker rooms, for instance, you know, we, we can't, I just want to clarify that. Am I understanding that correctly?
I, I would offer that consider it as managing it as one.
Yes.
Pot of money.
Yeah.
Versus separate individual pots of money for whatever they're designated for.
Yes.
And it puts a different management workload on Spencer from, again, this amount of money, whatever it is, associated with a given prop is limited to just that.
Yeah, but if it's one, it's anything within that scope.
Everything that I heard recommended.
That's right. That's right.
Would be managed within that one bucket of money.
Absolutely. Okay.
However, to answer your question, if you read the ballot language, it's purposely vague and it lists a lot of things that can be used with the bond money. Really, the only exclusion is for sporting facilities. So anything other than a stadium or basketball arena, we can use them based on what the wording of the proposition is.
So we can use them to educate our kids.
I'm just saying, yes, it can be shifted around and the district can add or subtract. As we saw with the 2021 bond, there's only exclusions for sporting facilities.
There's actually exclusions for lots of facilities because it is, it's, it's whatever we have on the ballot language, which is specifically the things that the committee has brought forward. And I'll give you a great example. Legacy Elementary was built in 1939. When we start checking out that plumbing, there's a good chance we might run into something. If that were to go, if that, if that project were to go a little over budget and another project was under budget, then of course, with, with, with the knowledge of the board, we could, it would be just like a budget amendment. You could move money from here to there to, to help out. And yes, and with one prop, yes, only, only what is, what is, what the committee has recommended.
Ms. Pinkerton, did you have a perspective on one or multi?
Well, originally, we kind of, the committee, the group that I was in, we talked about having multiple and doing renovations in one and then the middle school and maybe transportation in the other one. But then we got to talk in about, well, are we going to say that a rookie roof that's leaking is not important? And then a middle school to house these new people that we need, is that more important than fixing the leaky roofs? I mean, there's things that, the reason why we're calling this bond is because it's all important. We need it. We have leaky roofs in the middle school that's causing mold and growing on the, the ceilings and the walls. We have foundational issues because in the, my room, and I showed Mr. Stevenson, my room has lines, you can see where the pipe is, and it's growing all the mold from condensation that's happening underneath the foundation. That's important. We don't need me or another, or students or any other anybody else there to have, be in that, that situation where you're possibly getting sick from being, having a mold problem. That's an issue. And that's renovation. But we also are, I just told you all, we are very close to being at capacity at our, at our campus. And we don't even have sixth grade at our campus yet. We don't have a place to put them there. We need that, that another, that other building. So there's a lot of, yes, we talked about there's not any wants. These are all extreme needs that we need. And so I think it's important that we maybe put it all together because I'm afraid that we get digging into the middle school and we're going to find a lot more that we can't see on the outside when we get into the inside. There's a lot, lot of issues there. And so I think it's important that we put it all together.
Thank you. Any other community member?
Good evening. So I hear the back and forth, and it is very complicated. But one of the things that keeps sticking in my mind kind of focuses around the addition to the middle school. And so if we took that 63 million and we put it here and we take everything else that's renovation and need, why I feel that it could, should be too for that money was enough parents that were at our tables with sixth graders haven't reconciled yet their kids being a part of a middle school type campus. And like, one of the moms shared with us, right now, her sixth grader walks over to Legacy and can stay with the YMCA. She does not feel that her sixth grader was ready to go home and, I guess in our terms, be a latchkey kid at home. But will the YMCA move over here and be there for that sixth grade campus? So I, I feel like separating it would also let us hear from the community on how comfortable they are with putting sixth graders in a little more grown-up environment than where they're at. And the other thing that resonated with me as we talked, we have, we're investing in our elementary schools and you have kids coming from Pleasant View who are in these great, pretty schools. And then they, you've got this middle school that I'm not, I don't want to say it's a dump, but it's the middle child. It doesn't get new clothes. It's not getting the new things. But they can look out the door and they can see this fancy school. And sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that's when like you're figuring out life. And then you're sitting in this school that is not up to par with anything on either side of you. And so again, I think we have to invest in that because I feel like that's important to those kids, to have something to take ownership in and be proud during one of the hardest times of their life and not show them, oh, you are just the middle child. And so I think it should be too, because I think we still need to learn more about the sixth grade campus.
So for clarity, if I can follow up, I heard you recommend the, the repairs at Legacy, at RGB, I'm seeing RBG, and then the repairs at the existing middle school all be grouped together and then only the new addition at the middle school be a separate?
Yes, that is my opinion from the school piece of it.
Okay.
I do think on the buses, the buses are critical. We listen to parents talk about all of that. So I do feel the buses are very important. I don't, yes, the traffic is the traffic, but could that even be split apart so that the money going for concrete and stuff is viewed a little different than providing the buses and making sure that our kids can go to activities and can get to, to and from school?
Can I, can I ask a question of Dr. Dear with that? With, so I have a new seventh grader. I said that. And I have two more that'll come up that'll go through sixth grade. And I'm on the fence too. I mean, I've been a teacher and I've seen the awkwardness of sixth grade and junior high and all the things. But I'm curious, I don't know, if we were to, based on that apprehension, is there even any way to keep the sixth graders separate long-term anyway? Or, you know what I mean?
Where they're, where they're at now?
Yeah. Not where they're at now. I know that we're going to outgrow that campus.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, if, if that's the big community concern about.
Right. So we've, we've heard a lot of, a lot of feedback from moms nervous about the sixth grade. So that's why when we, when we're thinking about the design to intentionally pretty much put the sixth graders in the current middle school, and then the way we design it, I mean, we're not going to design it with all these hallways plugging in. design it, I mean, we're not going to design it with all these hallways plugging in, they'll be a standalone, standalone, but they'll still get to share facilities. So the plan is they would, they would only, they'd only mix when we intentionally want them to. Because you might, you might need that for, well, maybe band, you wouldn't for athletics, but just, just for different activities.
Okay, let me rephrase, because I hear what you're saying, and I asked these same questions. Let me ask a follow-up with, do we have land capacity, capability, anything at some point to have them separate if we were to wait on this? Or is the eventual, it's probably going to have to be put there no matter what anyway because of our land restriction or whatever, that just would extend it out and be more expensive later because we're waiting on that?
Right.
You following what I'm saying?
I mean, we, we have land, and if, you're right, if we, if we do it later, it's just that much more expensive.
But there's never going to be a plan, or, not that there's never, but right now, there's potentially not ever really going to continue to stay just a sixth grade campus, whether we do this now, whether we do it later. Even if we did it later, we're not going to build
That is not in the long-range plan.
A standalone.
Yes, ma'am.
Right?
But, correct, but we do intentionally want to design it so we can separate them.
Yes, and I agree with that fully, but.
Yeah, I was just going to chime in. I'm understanding that it's basically a separate wing
Yes.
For just the sixth graders, and then your seventh and eighth graders would have their, a, a separate wing from the sixth grade. Thank you. Next?
So, as you can tell by the number of people that have come up here with varying opinions, all of us that sat on that long-range planning committee, we had our opinions, we're moms, we're members of the community. It was not an echo chamber, and we learned a lot of things. We learned a lot of facts, and, but despite all of that, despite our opinions, despite the discussion, and believe me, there was discussion, there was debate, there were hard questions asked. I mean, my kids are in YMCA, so that'll give away maybe who I am. But we all came to the conclusion that this bond for this amount, for these things, were the needs. And I say that because we were educated, we looked into it, we looked at the research, and we came to that conclusion. So I think that one bond is the way to go, or one prop versus multiple is the way to go, because we've looked at those facts, we've looked at the needs, and like someone said, it's bare bones, it's not wants, it's not, I mean, I'm a, I'm a theater girl. I, give me a stage, like, I would love it. But you don't see that in, in this bond proposition, because there aren't wants. There are needs for our kids so that they can have a successful education.
Thank you.
Ms. Durand, to answer your question, sixth graders would still get to go to the YMCA over here.
Okay, and since you just outed yourself on being that parent, I'm going to ask you, would you vote no if we continued forward with the plan to put the sixth grade at the middle school? With that one thing that you have concern about that's valid, would that sway your vote against everything else? Okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so, great dialogue. First of all, again, thank you guys for working with me, trying to help. I, I think it's very important that we're able to look at this from all different angles and, and bring forward different thoughts. So, Dr. Dear, I, I know you and I talked about potentially having some pros and cons. Would you have something you'd care to share?
So, Mr. Stevens just asked me just to share some different possible scenarios, so this is pretty much everything we've talked about, everything on one prop, if they were separated in two props, and then even separated into three props. So this is just, so you can see numbers and the, and the, the projects that were recommended.
So in the wording of, that would be put on the, the ballot, what level of detail would be provided on there as to what it was intended for?
Is there a, is there, are these the only options if we were going to?
I, I don't think these are the only options. I had asked Dr. Dear to provide some different scenarios for us to just have different thoughts, again, on, there's pros and cons of if you were to package certain things together. I'm hearing that, again, it's pros and cons all the way around, so we will have to get to a, a point where we will have to make a decision on that momentarily. I was trying to step us through the next step here of what might be on the, the ballot, and as you can see by what Dr. Dear provided, it does call out high-level things like construction improvement and equipment for school facilities, safety, security enhancements.
And we will communicate out very detailed what is planned, as we've already talked about with Mr. Metter in our communication plan.
Looking at the different scenarios, the, the scenario one through five, I think I could support scenario one or five. I don't know if anybody else has any opinions about that?
Quick glance, quick glance, I'm thinking the same thing. I think I lean toward scenario one, but I could support, I think, scenario five.
After hearing a, a lot of our points and the other points, I'm kind of leaning towards one, one proposition, because I fear that, well, I, I just am leaning towards one proposition.
So for communities' understanding, the scenarios that was just referenced, scenario one was one proposition altogether. Scenario five, as referenced, had addition to the middle school as one prop, all the renovations as a second prop, and then the buses and the traffic as a third prop. Again, just for y'all's edification.
And I'm going to go ahead and complete my sentence. I fear that if we do separate props, you're going to have some confusion, and that things that we desperately need are going, and people are going to be like, well, we can save a little bit of money by not getting new buses, and that's just as big of a need as getting rid of mold in Mrs. Pinkerton's classroom, in my opinion. So that's why I, I'm going to go ahead and say that I fully support one prop.
So I, I do think that voters and the general public like options. I think, you, people like options, consumers like options, options are good. I think the time for options, i.e. props as it pertains to bonds, are when there are wants, a, as a part of it. If we had a, if we had the, the theater, if we had the different things that, that we would love to have as a district, if that was on the ballot, I would say the responsible thing to do and to appeal to our voter and community would be to, to separate those and give them as an additional prop. But given that these are all just bare bone, to take Krista's term, bare bone needs, I, I think ones, I don't know how you get away from just doing one, because it's all a need, there's no really wants in here.
Is there anybody here that could not get behind one, one proposition?
All right, I appreciate all of the discussion on it.
Can I, can I make a motion here to?
I am happy to entertain a motion now.
Can I make a motion to, to prove an order calling a bond in the district on November 4th with one proposition, proposition A in the amount of 119,957,000?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Jeff and a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next on the agenda, item C, we are going to table until next board meeting. So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn. I'll, I'll second. Adjourn.
And don't forget to go meet the Wildcat. Yes, for anyone interested, we're doing Meet the Wildcat at, at The Wild right now, so feel free to walk over. Thank you, teachers, again, from the other campuses for coming. We really appreciate it.